Okay, well, it's 5:30, so I'm gonna go ahead and call the Atomo City Council meeting to order. If you would be able to rise for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Chris will go ahead and take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Here.
Councilmember Galloway?
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Here.
Councilmember McIntyre? Councilmember Cavanis?
Here.
Mayor Johnson?
Here.
The next item is to approve our consent agenda, part one. Is there a motion to approve? Which two for?
Second.
Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
The next item is to approve our consent agenda, part two. Is there a motion to approve?
Move to approve.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
No.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
The next item is to approve tonight's city council agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Second. Any further discussion? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is our city administrators' report to council and citizens. I'll turn it over to Phil Rath, our city administrator.
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a couple of quick things I wanted to mention. The first is, we have a couple of people from staff and from our partners that are attending. I have a housing conference. They're at a reception. They're at a reception tonight for those that receive the Thriving Communities designation. And then the conference will start tomorrow and actually be presenting about the city and some of the things that we're doing and why we received that designation. So, that is going on. And then, secondly, I wanted to mention that next Thursday, a week from this Thursday, on September 11th, there will be a community gathering in some remembrance of the events that occurred September 11th, 2001. And that'll be outside City Hall, 105 East Third Street, so not the depot, but the actual City Hall building, on the Fourth Street side. Ceremony will take place at the flagpole. Community members, leaders, first responders will gather to honor the lives lost, and arrows will be shown on that day. Public, 9:00 AM, yes, 9:00 AM on September 11th. Public is encouraged to attend and join in the time of reflection and unity. And I'll turn the meeting back over.
Will we be touring the building at that time?
We will not.
Okay, thank you. Just for the benefit of the people that are here tonight, can you go ahead and just give a real brief explanation of why the Thriving Communities designation is important to this feature?
Well, the Thriving Communities designation provides the city with grant opportunities. There's a handful of communities that were selected for this, and dollars that are set aside for specific projects. Developers, development projects can be applied for, and then those dollars can be utilized towards that. Up to a million dollars per project can be utilized, and that works towards either low-income housing tax credit projects, workforce housing tax credit projects, community catalyst projects. So there's a number of things that can be utilized. There's more information on the website to talk about the program overall and the benefits that could come from that. I know that the city's been, and some of our partners have been, we've had a number of developers reach out already about potential for some projects and what opportunities we might have to increase the level of housing that we have here in the community. So, we're excited about that part of it. And then to, just to touch off of Councilman Cavanis's comments, we will not be moving back into City Hall on the 11th. That's where the ceremony will occur. But to that point, we are planning to move back into City Hall the end of the month, the end of this month, September. So the last week of September, the City Hall depot and the City Hall, City Hall building will be closed to take care of that move. So the Monday, we'll be kind of getting things all set for the move. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, moving company will begin to help assist with that. Friday, be resetting everything, and then hopefully reopen that following Monday. I think it's the 21st or 29th.
So our first city council meeting in October will be back in City Hall?
That is, yes. That's the plan, to have the first city council meeting in October, back over at City Hall.
Will the city council be allowed to tour the building before we have the first meeting?
Yes. Yeah, I mean, you can tour, the city council can tour the building now. Nothing is in there as far as setting back the offices or anything, but yeah, we can make arrangements and have you be able to go through it prior to that, or that last week, once we get reset back in there.
Okay, thank you. Finally, that's all Phil. The next item on our agenda is where I ask to identify citizens who would like to comment on any of tonight's agenda items. We do have one here. Is there anybody else that wants to comment on any of our agenda items tonight? Okay, since the agenda, since the person wants to speak on something that's been tabled, I don't know if it's gonna be taken off the table tonight to be decided by council or not. So I'm gonna go ahead and let this person speak now, before we get further into the agenda. So Ben Foot, do you wanna come up? And identify yourself and your address, or what you want to talk about?
Ben Foot, 403 East Main Street, and I was just talking about the tabled item, which is proclamation procedure. After talking last time, last week, a week ago, yeah, just doing more research and looking at what others have done. I looked at the state of Iowa. And the state of Iowa simply has proclamations done by the governor. They're not passed by the House or the Senate. The governor has purview as to which ones are passed or which ones are given and are not given. And it's simply up to there, up to whoever was governor at that time. So if we're to align with that, then I would advise that we do that with the mayor. And the mayor is the one that has purview as to proclamations. If there needs to be a check in place, I would say that if there is some sort of conflict or disagreement between the mayor thinks the proclamation should be and a group of people who are wanting the proclamation, then they can bring it to the council. You have to settle any dispute, but I would like to see it to go to where, yeah, the mayor has purview on that, just like the state of Iowa does. So that's only it.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, the next item on our agenda tonight, we have one public hearing, so I'm gonna turn it over to Chris.
This is the time, place, and date set for a public hearing on the proposed which convey real property to the Atomo Community School District.
I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and I believe Chris is gonna present on this.
Yes, sir. So last, the Atomo Community School District expressed interest in acquiring an alleyway adjacent to its parking lot that the city no longer means, in exchange, just to negotiate accommodations related to its sewer separation project. The property being conveyed to the Atomo Community School District is described in the staff summary. The property described is not needed for city purposes and is located adjacent to an existing Atomo Community Schools parking lot. The city completed the vacate process by adopting ordinance number 3248-2025 on August 19th, 2025. To comply with procedural requirements of the Idaho Code, this council has held a public hearing on the proposed conveyance of the city's interest in the property, at which time this council proposed us to take action their own and to receive oral and or written objections from any resident or property owner of said city to such action. After all objections have been received and considered, the council may take additional action to approve the conveyance or may abandon the proposal to authorize said conveyance. My office has received no complaints or disagreeing as regards to this proposed.
Does council have any questions for Chris regarding this issue?
And we know that the pieces of land there are kind of in exchange for some easement and some access, and helps the city to.
That is correct.
Any other questions from council for Chris? If not, since this is a public hearing, does anyone in the audience have any comments or questions that they'd like to ask regarding this issue? Okay, hearing's done. I would entertain a motion then to close the public hearing. Second. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Resolution number 160-2025, approving the conveyance of interest in real property to the Atomo Community School District. Recommendation, pass and adopt resolution number 160-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
The next item on our agenda is ordinances, but we don't have any this evening, so we'll move on to departmental board or commission recommendations and reports.
Bid report to reject bid received on the proposed structure rehabilitation, water pollution and toll facility, lift stations, and primary clarifiers project. Recommendation, reject bid received on the proposed structure rehabilitation, WPCF lift stations, and primary clarifiers project.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second. Okay, and I believe our public works director, Mr. Burke Myers, is gonna present on this.
Thank you, Mayor. So we received bids for this project on July 16th, 2025, at 2:00 PM. We only received one bid, which exceeded the infinity of probable contact approximately 20%. After going back and forth again, we already think the best course of action is to reject the bid and rebid the project. We tried to include some stuff in the projects that we normally do for the contractor, like bypass pumping, thinking it would streamline the project, they wouldn't have to depend on us to do stuff. It turns out that especially contractors don't wanna do that stuff, and the prime contractors don't have enough extra things to do on top of specialty work. So we think by rebidding it and changing the scope of work a little bit, we can probably get some more bidders to drive it to it and lower prices.
Can you check if your mic's on?
Then stand a little closer.
Does council have any questions for Phil?
So you feel the chances are pretty good that we will get better deals?
Yeah, they can get better deals if we rebid and do some of the bypass pumping and de-watering ourselves.
What's the problem as far as the lay? Is that a problem?
No, it's concrete repairs, so they won't deteriorate much from one year to the next. We're just slowly deteriorating, but at the point, maybe some more done.
Okay.
Was the expectation that this get completely, yet this fall to fill it, or this is probably?
Yeah, we'll probably rebudge it for the next physical year, and we'll still have the money. There's the money that was budgeted, we're just gonna go back in the pot, and then we'll give it again next year.
Any other questions from council for Phil? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanis?
Yes.
Administrative hearing according to City Code Section 24 and a half, 11, hearing 814 East Plum Street. Recommendation, at the conclusion of the hearing, city council must render a decision regarding appeal of nuisance of 814 East Plum Street.
So I believe Phil, you're gonna handle this.
Yes, honorable mayor. So as was mentioned, according to City Code, property owner at 814 has requested administrative hearing regarding the notices and ordinance violations and abatement orders received from the city regarding the property. During the hearing, the nuisance and attached evidence will be entered into record. Following that, the appellant will be provided an opportunity to present their case, including any additional evidence or witnesses to support their claim as to why they believe that is a nuisance that does not exist. City staff will be provided an opportunity to ask clarifying questions to the appellant, followed by city council. City staff will then provide any additional evidence, followed by an opportunity for the appellant and city council to ask clarifying questions of staff. The appellant will then have a final opportunity to provide any rebuttal information or comments. Per City Code, upon conclusion of the hearing, as was mentioned, city council will be asked to render a written decision as to whether the nuisance exists based upon the evidence provided. If a nuisance is found to exist, it should be ordered debated within a reasonable time. Let's see. So this is administrative hearing on appeal of nuisance determination for 814 Plum Street. It's the City of Atomo versus Sarah Lee. Today is September 2nd, 2025, and the time is now 5:45 PM. This is the time scheduled for the administrative appeal hearing regarding the City of Atomo's identification of existing nuisance, nuisances upon Lee property at 814 Plum Street pursuant to the Atomo City Code. This hearing is being recorded by video recording. Present for this appeal are myself, Phil Rath, Atomo City Administrator, Mayor Rick Johnson, city council members Keith Cavanis, Carrie Galloway, Bill Hoffman Jr., and Dan Reed, city clerk Chris Reinhardt, and city attorney Logan Brundage via teleconference. We also have Jake Rush, Kurt Stevens for the City of Atomo, and Sarah Lee for the appealing party. City Code Section 24-3, sub 10, states, "All weeds, grass, vines, and brush growing on lots and parcels of ground within corporate limits to the city, 10 inches or more in height, except crops, are considered a nuisance." A 20-foot mode buffer is required between crops and adjacent streets, alleys, public rights away, and private property. This provision will become effective April 1, 2015. City Code Section 24 and a half, dash two, states, "All vehicles on the property are required to be in comparable condition, current unlicensing, and have the current license plates and tags properly displayed." City Code Section 24-3-12, states, "Prohibited outdoor storage of indoor items, indoor furniture, junk, scrap, auto parts, tires, pallets, lumber, fixtures, solid wiz, recyclables, tire debris, tree debris, burn debris, inoperable equipment, general clutter, miscellaneous refuse, rubbish, debris, and other items not normally required in the day-to-day use of the exterior of the property." This also includes items stored on trailers, in beds of trucks, under chards, in dumpsters, et cetera. City Code Section 22 and a half, dash 484, states, "The growth of brush, weeds, and grass shall be controlled to prevent harm reach of ticks, chiggers, and other noxious insects. Parks shall be so maintained as to prevent the growth of ragweed, poison ivy, poison oak, poison sumac, and other noxious weeds considered detrimental to health. Open areas shall be maintained free of heavy undergrowth of any description." City Code Section 34-5, states, "Trees encroaching the alley, sidewalk, or street. Trees must remain trimmed so that they're not closer than 14 feet above the road surface and no closer than 10 feet above the sidewalk surface. An appropriate buffer is to be maintained." According to the documents related to this matter, the nuisance determinations were made by the City of Atomo by written letter or order on July 17th, 2025, and July 18th, 2025, respectively. A final notice was issued on August 20th, 2025. The request for appeal was submitted by email by the property owner on August 23rd, 2025. The request for appeal is therefore timely. After conferring with Sarah Lee, this appeal hearing was scheduled for today, as required by City Code. As part of the record of these proceedings, I'll now identify documents that are included within the file related to the appeal. July 17th, 2025, violation notice, ordinance 24-3, sub 10, grass and weeds. July 18th, 25, violation notice, ordinance 24 and a half, dash two, junk motor vehicles, and ordinance 24-3-12, prohibited outdoor storage of indoor items. July 18th, 2025, violation notice, ordinance 22 and a half, dash 484, brush, weeds, and grass, and ordinance 34-5, trimming and removal of trees and shrubbery. August 20th, 2025, the final notice, ordinance 24 and a half, dash two, junk motor vehicles, and ordinance 24-3-12, prohibited outdoor storage of indoor items. And finally, a document identifying the noted ordinances. Those were submitted to council beforehand, and copies of those documents were provided to the appellant by email. I will now allow the appellant to present their information first, and then the city will be allowed to present information in response if it chooses. The appellant will then have a final opportunity to respond to any additional information submitted by the city. The city council and mayor will then ask any clarifying questions regarding the information presented in today's appeal hearing. Those who will be speaking today are reminded to conduct themselves in a courteous and respectful manner. Please do not interrupt or speak over each other. Each party will be recognized during their appropriate time to speak. When you're given the opportunity to speak, you step up to the podium, identify yourself clearly by name and home or business address. We'll now allow the appellant, Sarah Lee, present her information related to the appeal. Sarah, if you wanna come up to the podium, please.
Yeah.
Do you wanna hold the microphone close to your mouth?
And you state your name and address, and then provide any information that you have as to why you believe that nuisances do, nuisance, nuisances do not exist.
My name is Sarah Lee. I reside at 814 Plum Street.
Pull that mic right to your face.
You have to speak louder, too.
Yeah.
Is that okay?
A little closer.
Speak a little louder.
Is that better?
That's much better.
My name is Sarah Lee. I reside at 814 Plum Street, Atomo. I don't know how to share anything with you guys. So I don't know if you wanna take a look at the floor, because I do have. You can look at the whole thing if you would like. There's a document that shows notes, which I did leave a copy with, which it did not look like was provided to you guys. That was part of.
Do you wanna walk us through that document before you, because there's only one copy, so.
Yeah, there's just one.
Okay.
So that document, actually, I actually came to the. So this document that I'm using, I actually went into the office to discuss these matters. And I documented if I made a phone call, if the call was not returned to me. I even, like, logged the conduct that I received from city personnel. And then, I think on this one, so this particular incident, there was a city official who spoke with my son and not with me. So that's documented on here. So some of the issues that you'll notice in this is, there was a notice that was given that was, I think it was a 24-hour notice. And it was received in less than 24 hours. So I don't know if there's others to be individuals that are facing these kind of challenges, but if we're to receive a notice living within the city limits, and one of the issues I have with this, and I have photos for you, I can give you my phone, and you can look at the photos. I had an incident when there was construction being done, and the people that were hired through the city, which I have also, you know, two engineering office, they came out during the incident. I was told that they were going, so there was a removal of trees, and they fell them onto my property. No one spoke with me, and I had property damages. I was told that for those damages, they were going to level the ground and reseed it properly to make right on the damages that were received. So I'll show you, yeah, I'll pass my phone around. You guys can look at my file on, just for my address on the top. So I did note on here that I got these in two separate letters. These were two separate envelopes, received same day, and it's less than 24 hours notice. One of the pictures I wanna kind of bring out to you here, my one of my vehicles. So that vehicle is licensed, it's registered, and it drives. If you notice, if you were to look through your photos as well, which I believe you have, you'll notice the vehicle is in one spot in the photos, and you'll notice the vehicle's moved facing offense in the other spot. So obviously, it's awkward, though. I actually just driven again the other day, this weekend, when I was having one. I also do don't notice how little kids, so it's not very easy, but I do communicate with disabilities when it's, like, I go in and try to communicate. Sorry. So I can show you the notes on this. Someone that just did it in the comments was like, if you have a doctor or, obviously, it's gonna have stuff in it that looks like you're gonna haul it off. There's stuff that was taken a picture of after curb, and I utilize the service, what we call for city pickup. I'm probably not the only one that can attest to, they're not very timely all the time. So then, I can, I literally can come in and tell you the date, the photos are looking, based off of this. And I even, like, told them they can call down to the office themselves to verify these dates. So if you wanna look at this one over, that's kind of the overview of that document. The most. So I did request, so I requested copies of, sorry, of the nuisance order that's been issued on my property, because I get them quite frequently, especially if I'm doing yard pickup. I have kids. I think one of the photos I took when I asked them if they can explain to me, because I don't understand. I was told I'm not allowed to have the children's toys unless they don't look cluttered. I have some of my kids' results, so if kids play, I mean, if any of you have kids, you can probably attest, they're going to play. I shouldn't have to get rid of my kids' toys for ruining them. I don't see how those would be seen as a problem. But I've also asked them several times when I've been in there, like, can someone walk me through this? I can show you the most recent one when I went in, and I was shoved this letter back to me across the table by your guys' individual, where I said, can you explain to me what it is you are wanting from me on this? Because if you wanna look at the images that I receive, they're very small compared to the images that you guys probably get to look at. You, I just saw, which was a blowgun paper. I'm receiving super small images. So I did go to the office and ask if he could explain this, if he could write it on here for me. So I had a documentation of what is being specified, because you can hardly see these arrows, and I'll hand you this one as well, so you can see it. But I was also told I have to bring you the documentation to prove of registration to my vehicles, to your, to your offices, and I don't feel like anyone else is being asked to do these things. I already did provide it on one of my other vehicles. Photo copies were taken, and, you know, nothing was ever given back. And to my knowledge, they're not even in a file, because I left a copy of that one page that you see. You can tell it's a bloody copy, and I didn't see it in front of you today. So, let's open that. So here's, I mean, some of the other specified nuisances that were prior to that. And then I did make a request, which they, they told me was going to cost, if you move to 50s E now, you'll be able to see, they said that the request is going to cost 300 and something to 600. All I was asking was, if I'm the only individual on my block that's being very depicted. And I would feel this way, because I can show you images of a vehicle that is directly behind me that is overgrown, into the brush, and it's still to be for today. As I'm receiving multiple notices, as you can tell, there's another notice that's listed with multiple lists. So I will also open this up for you guys to look at. I have a whole file. I've had damages done to my property that you'll be able to see on this file in comparison of before and after. There was a city project that was done on that blowgun. I had grass in that area. It was grass from 2005 until it was completed. It was actually a project from the funeral home that the city allowed them to complete. I was given a rock bay instead of the grass that was, I was given to utilize and maintain. With this, the waterway was also changed, which makes it, which makes it a little more challenging when you have flooded waters that were never there before, to try to maintain as well. And if you go through all of these photos, it'll also show you some of my neighbors' photos that I'm, every time I'm getting one of these notices, I'm also taking the photos to document that I'm the only one. I do feel very depicted on this, and I'm not quite understanding why. And then, I think, the other concern is, anyone else going through this, I mean, we're getting less than 24 hours, you know, we said. So it's very difficult. I did follow through with the things they asked. That wasn't an issue. But when I'm coming in and talking to, because timeliness is the issue, as you can see, like, I do have my children with needs that I deal with, and as well as myself. Though I'm working with, trying to address the issues with you guys actively, and I just don't feel very supported or heard. And the conduct that I've received is not a victim for this, but I would, I would hope you can see via the gas station.
Do you have any?
Do you have any other evidence right now that you want to present at this time? You'll have another opportunity at the end here.
Just the phone evidence.
Okay, yeah, please bring that up there. Okay.
And it shows, like, it just shows you from the Google Earth images from the property before, and then it shows you current, and it also shows your neighbors, and it shows you the images. If you have any questions, I'll watch and watch. I can refer.
Does the city's representative have any questions of the appellant at this time? The city council or mayor have any questions for the appellant?
I do, actually. So you identified that you received communication that wasn't, or your interactions with the city, you didn't feel supported or that you were treated poorly. Yes, I'm looking through these emails, that information, and I don't, I'm not understanding that. So can you help me understand that a little bit more? Thank you.
Sorry. When I went into your, sorry, I forget, it's the...
Community Development Office Code Enforcement.
Yes, when I went into the Code Enforcement Office before I received that. And all the times that I've had interaction with your city administrator, it's been a positive interaction.
I have one, excuse me, I have one more question. The vehicles are supposed to have been licensed and operable. I see, I think, two vehicles. Is that correct?
Yes, two vehicles. One, I just did the relicensing. That was my bad on that one. But the other one is current, expires in November.
So the dark colored one is the one that's licensed?
It's correct, yeah.
And the light colored one?
I missed it by a few months. That was my bad on the sticker color. Just like it was theirs, if you were to look in previous images, I was the only one that made the mistake. They took a picture of the previous times, and we both were on that.
But they are now both licensed or operable?
Tomorrow morning. I didn't have a chance with everything today to go down there to fix that. It will be fixed by tomorrow.
And both of them run?
Yeah. I pulled them both off down to, out of the driveway. I can show anybody if they would like to see. I offered that when I went in as well.
I guess I have two questions. Number one, we're here to talk about your particular situation today, so we really can't talk about your neighbors. My hope would be that the city would hold your neighbors to the same standards that they're holding you to. And I guess the other question I have of you, if I understood you right, you're not opposed to cleaning up your yard?
It's alright.
Based on the pictures that I've seen?
I'm basically wrong.
Your yard really needs to be cleaned up. You're not opposed to cleaning it up?
If they went and went today, they would see that I did get the brush removed. That wasn't an issue. The other items are taken care of. If there's anything else, I really, like I said, I've gone there and been very cooperative, go say, can you point this out? Can you tell me? Can you explain it to me?
So you cleaned your whole yard?
Did anyone make a drive by today?
I was by the shop.
Yeah, I did too.
I didn't feel like it was cleaned up. There's still more work to do at least.
If you let me know that I'm receptive of that information, I just need to know.
I felt like maybe it was better, but there's still a lot of opportunity as well. And it doesn't mean that, it's just there's some opportunity there. I agree with you.
Well, I don't think it's the council's responsibility to come out and tell you what to clean up on your property. You'd rather be able to see that clearly.
Right, so like, if you went by city, my way, let us see, I had some yard tools from cleaning up this weekend, then I gave them back away in the garage. I have, I have multiple children. I mean, that's not really like an excuse, but I have two of these, and I'm a single parent on it. So I mean, if that's how it's been extended.
You mentioned your son. Is your son with there, or how old is he?
He is in high school. He is 14.
Which one of our personnel reviewed this process and has written notices? I see a couple of names, but I don't know who's really on top of it.
Yeah. The city representatives will be presenting anything additional in just a moment. I just wanted to make sure if there were any other witnesses or any other information you wanted to provide at this time. And again, you'll have an opportunity in a moment after the city representatives present anything that they have. Alright, so to answer your question, I believe Jake Rush is a city representative that will provide anything additional at this time.
Yeah, good evening, council. Just to touch on a few things. This, this particular case started in the middle of June, so we're looking at about three months. Vehicles have to, they have to be licensed. The tag has to be on the license. We don't have a way to verify without calling everyone in. So the code does state that they have to appear operable, and they have to appear licensed. This particular car was surrounded by brush and weeds, and it didn't have the correct tags on it.
Say that again, please.
It did have, it did have the correct year tags on it, and it was surrounded by tags, right weeds and things like that. That's why we need a junk motor vehicle. If they're currently licensed and appear likely to have been operated, then we don't mess with them.
You have to have access to it. That's correct.
Right. As far as the letters, I don't know that we were sent out a 24-hour notice. I know we have a 48-hour notice for things that are blowing around, like curb or something like that. We also allow two days for mailing. So if we send out a five-day grass notice, you get seven days. If we send out a 10-day nuisance notice, you get 12 days. If we send out that 48-hour notice, you get four days. We do that, and that may seem quick, but we have to keep in mind that this is affecting neighbors and neighborhoods. So we don't want to be, we want to be diligent with those notices. I know, I know Kurt, I know that he's very receptive to extensions. If he feels their, you know, Dean can work with those people if they're making progress and things like that, so, yeah.
Do we have any formal complaints on this property?
Yes, that's another thing. Our office is strictly complaint-based. When we go out to investigate a property, we may look at properties in the nearest area, but with the staff that we have, we're completely complaint-based, we just don't have time to get to everything. So, yes, there was a complaint.
So before we get to the rest of any city council questions, I wanted to make sure, did you have anything else that you need or wanted to provide at this time?
Just, I think you got the pictures there. She did mention the pictures in the letter are too small. That's something that Kurt's taken upon himself to do. I never did those when I was in his position. The verbiage explains what needs to happen. Those pictures are a little something extra that he puts on there. I think it's nice for the people to have a visual effect, but it's nothing that we did when I was in the nuisance program.
Does the appellant have any clarifying questions for the city representative? Do you have any questions you wanted to ask Jake regards to what he just said, stated?
How much time have you spent working on this property?
Sorry, just real quick. Did you have anything you wanted to ask Jake at this time? To answer any questions you have with the process or anything?
I actually did one upstairs, like, when you guys sent the letter out, not everybody speaks fast named in English, that you guys were going to say. I mean, maybe seeing your comments in the study, but, I mean, where I'm from, it's like legal driving. And so it would help to have a little quick, I think with my model or another one, it states that we can have our mowers, and then I have a toy that I'm really wanting to have. So I guess, like, I don't quite understand, like, where sort of, like, it's when it states one thing and then something else is different, and some of that. But I did ignore in the garage, because it was, it was a good idea.
Yeah, so I guess with the language, when I look through the pictures of this case, it's pretty loudly apparent that grass over 10 inches, it's grass over 10 inches. Junk motor vehicles are vehicles that don't appear to be operable or licensed currently. I feel that the language is okay.
What was her complaint about being told she had to get rid of her children's toys?
I don't, I don't know that that was part of, I don't see any of the pictures that have those circles or anything. Outdoor toys, outdoor items that are being used for outdoor use, as long as they're in an orderly manner, they can be there. You know, if there's, if there's toys in their lineup in certain areas, we're not going to mess with those. If they're broken about and plastic everywhere or things like that, we'll address them.
Okay, thank you.
Does the city council or mayor have any questions for the city's representative?
I just have one. So in the, one of the pictures, it just, it has like the trash and the recycling circled.
Yeah, so there's a couple of things there. I know with this case, there's been multiple occasions. One bulky item, one bulky item a week is picked up by the, for sanitation, the others are left. So if there's more than one item put out there, they're going to leave those, and they're not going to pick them up again. So you have to put out one item, and you have to call them. We get that a lot. The other, the other issue could be in this case, that trash receptacle has to be removed from the curb, brought up to the house. I think it's 10 hours after pickup and 10 hours before, something like that. Those, those parents are quite...
Just can't sit there.
The trash can can't just sit there with trash being put into it. So that might, might be the problem there. It's hard to tell. If it's been overflowing, there's several issues.
I guess the question that I have, those different violation letters, the citations or the sections of the ordinance are pretty specific and pretty clear to me. It gives all kinds of examples about what the issue is. When the appellant said that she's not been explained in a way that she understands by city staff, can you talk about that at all? On the times that she's come into the office, has she asked for somebody to explain, well, what are the real issues that I need to take care of?
Yeah, so I've spoke with her last year, and explained some situations with her. I know that she spoke with several staff members. I have a hard time thinking that they wouldn't explain it to her and let her know, you know, what's going on there. I know that she's spoken to her coordinator. She's talking, she spoke with Kurt. She's spoken with the administrator. I, I, I would imagine that things would be explained. I can't speak for that, because I wasn't there personally, so.
City council or mayor have any additional questions for the city representative?
Anytime that you were present, and she asked questions, you did give her information to her satisfaction? She understood what was requested?
Anytime that I was asked, yes. And I have been around Kurt and seen him in a professional capacity, and I feel that he helps himself, he holds himself well, and goes about things in a very good way, trying to help customers, if you want to call them customers, in our department. I have no doubt in his abilities.
I know Kurt too. I think he does handle himself quite well.
So he didn't? I think it's already been answered, but just from my clarification, there really was no 24-hour, less than 24-hour notice given, because it would have spanned.
No, even, even our final notices will be 10 days, but two-day mail, something like that.
I think it's because one was July 17th, and one was July, or two were July 18th.
So that's what I'm saying, that was two different violations, correct?
Yeah.
Actually, three.
Yeah, three, okay.
I think that's four.
Any other questions by the city council or mayor for the city representative?
I, I guess I will say one more thing. I did also drive by the property today. It had taken large leaps towards what we were looking for. I wish it would have happened in June, so that we could have this taken care of. But yes, she did, she did wonders on the property compared to what it was when I drove by it today. We still have the white van that's not currently licensed, and a few little things, but compared to what it was, I will attest to the fact that she did a lot of work on the property.
Is that clarification that she will be, or is meaning city code or not?
So I did look at it that close. I will say, from my drive-by today, it was pretty darn close. So, you know, I can, I agree with your direction, or I probably will anyways, go by there, make sure that it's buttoned up, but from what I seen today, it takes leaps and bounds towards what we were looking for, I think.
Okay, so I have a question. If I were to go by there and help her, she obviously has her hands full with all the things. Spend the day cleaning up and doing, would that be good to get us past this crisis and get us on the right direction?
Yeah, like I said, in comparison, or in preparation for this, I feel like the property is pretty close now. Like I said, you know, it just wasn't there leading up to this, but I would say that she's, she's done pretty well. That's the direction that we want to take, that I go out there and do it once over, and file this out, as long as it remains the way it's, is, is going to stay, you know. We can close this case.
And I guess I would have a question, but a comment, what you just said. My concern would be not only the property's been brought up to snuff, but there's also commitment by the appellant that it's going to be maintained that way in the future, so two, three months, got to not back to the same situation.
Yep. We've had, I think, five separate cases where this has met a conclusion with this property.
What were the five cases, because there was no plan of action? I mean, are you saying that there was a case, and then it was cleaned, and then it went back, and then there was a case, and then it was cleaned, and then it went back?
Correct.
Okay, yeah, so I guess I'd be really interested in the plan of action going forward as well.
Not only that, but that commitment to a plan.
Right, right.
So where are we tonight? We do not authorize no action on this. What's our next step?
Yeah, I, like I said, I think that I go out with staff, we take a look at the property. We decide if there's any further violations. I know the van's a violation. Why don't you take care of that? And there's no violations on the property, we close it out. And then it wouldn't be reopened until we got another complaint.
Well, and the point of tonight's administrative hearing was to determine if a nuisance exists or doesn't exist, based off of the information that's provided, so. That, that is really what the point of this was, not the action that has happened or hasn't happened, but was it a nuisance defined? And that'd be the point of the part here. And if a nuisance still exists, then the talk about abating that. Anything else from the city representative? Alright, appellant Sarah Lee, do you have any additional information you'd like to submit in response to the information that was just provided by the city's representative? Do you have anything that you want to add, based on hearing what the city representative stated? Do you have anything you needed to add to, before we close the hearing portion here? You okay? Alright, so the appeal would be considered submitted, and the city council will now deliberate to render a decision as to whether a nuisance exists. The time is 6:18. If the city council finds that a nuisance does exist, it shall be ordered to abate within a reasonable time established by the city council. This decision will put forth, and will be put in writing, forward to the appellant, and shall be considered final. Now, this appeal hearing is concluded, and I pass the gamble back over to the mayor. Thank you.
Okay, as the city administrator indicated, the council needs to determine if a nuisance in fact does exist based on the information that you've been given. And if you feel that way, then there needs to also be a reasonable time established for the abatement to continue to be finished up. So that's what you guys need to be deciding.
I was going to say, the pictures and the evidence brought today do show and meet the code sections provided for a nuisance.
And I just want to make, the pictures, the pictures we received today, do they reflect what Dan and I see there? Like, I wonder the pictures, is what I was like, you know, I guess. I mean, I know some of them, but like, what's the span?
We're not looking at the work that's been done. We're looking at...
No, no, but I want to know like the span of the...
The pictures that you had, that were provided to you, were probably recurting based on...
Okay, so based on what's been said already, I need a motion and a second, that there is a nuisance that does in fact exist.
I'd like to have a little more comment, Your Honor. I think I'm confused about what is a nuisance and does it exist? That's kind of confusing for me, because it looks like what our representative tells... That's kind of confusing for me because it looks like what our representative tells me, he's going to go out there and give it the once over one more time, you know? So is he going out there just to waste his time? Or does he feel there's still a nuisance there and he'll have to report it to anyone?
I, I, if I can make a suggestion, a possibility of maybe me going out there tomorrow, doing a once over of the property, seeing if there is anything that's left over and then giving an amount of time away, which I think would need to be corrected.
Well, so that may play into the, the timeframe. But the appeal was based upon the designation of these items being a nuisance. And that's what was being appealed. And so the decision before the council is, if there was sufficient evidence to state that the, what staff designated as nuisance does exist or did exist at the time, or does not, or did not exist at the time. So is it a nuisance or not? Because otherwise, it could be that anything could change back to the state it was before regardless of what was completed between the time letters were issued and tonight.
And nuisance as defining the city code that you've read earlier today.
I agree with council person Galloway. I believe a nuisance existed and still exists.
Now, part, if that is the decision of a council, part of your remedy could be to have staff go and identify at times. You could put that into staff, identify a reasonable timeframe and defer that over to staff to work with the individual. But the first thing would be determining if nuisance exists or existed. And if it doesn't exist anymore, if everything was completed, then staff could let that know too.
So does somebody like to make a recommendation then, based on what I'm hearing the council say? It's still going to be both of that for both of them.
Well, the recommendation or the acknowledgement is that there is a nuisance there. So.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Now, the second part would be to determine a reasonable timeframe by the council for the extra work that still needs to be accomplished. Or as city administrator said, you could defer that to city staff to work with the appellant on a reasonable timeframe.
I think that would be appropriate, that if city staff worked with Ms. Lee to determine a time, a timeframe that works for the city and for Ms. Lee. You know, she has identified, she does have her hands full. But we also, as Jake identified too, you know, there's neighbors that are complaining about it. But if we can work together, the city staff and Ms. Lee.
Is that your motion?
I don't know if this.
Your motion?
Hey, I move that.
Yes, I will second that.
And I'd like to have some kind of a timeframe laid into that. Are we talking about a week, two weeks? Or what's the time going to be to meet the requirements? See if in fact there is a requirement.
But that's about, that, that goes along with working with the city staff.
That's, yeah, get to the city staff to make that timeframe.
Now, the motion has been moved and seconded.
So usually a nuisance notice is 10 days, two days mail. I would, I would think that what is remaining could be taken care of at that time and that would be my recommendation.
Will be taken care of in what time?
So within those 10 days of speaking with her, letting her know what, what is left to take care of. Based on this file, I think that would be a good recommendation as far as to finish her up.
Thank you for that clarification.
I want to be part of that help.
So based on what Jake just said, you want to amend your motion then?
Nope.
Is leaving up to city staff?
Correct.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded. Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Okay.
And Jake, you will walk Ms. Lee through what just happened, correct? Thank you.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is resolution, resolutions. We have nine of those tonight.
Resolution number 151-2025, accepting the work is finally complete and approving the final pay request that includes multiple change orders for Legacy Field Soccer Complex project. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number 151-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion approved.
Second. Can I believe our parks director, Gene Ratchey, can handle this?
Thank you, your honor. Legacy Field Soccer Complex project has been completed and the final pay application for $9,834.87 should be paid. This project involved the construction of three full-size soccer fields in Central Edition Park. There were 12 change orders for this project. A list of the change orders is attached. And the total cost of this project was $2,957,678.21.
Does council have any questions for Gene?
Great project. I'm sorry about it.
How was that paid for?
Legacy Foundation, JBS, Community First Word Unit, and help the project donation.
Wonderful. Thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take your role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Resolution number 157-2025, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 402 Lincoln, the Torres Construction of Etomo, Iowa, in the amount of $23,500. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number 157-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Approve the recommendation.
I believe Jake, you're going to present on this?
Thank you, mayor. So bids for asbestos removal, demolition, and cleanup of 402 Lincoln were accepted until 2:00 PM on August 21st, 2025. We received four asbestos and demolitions bid, demolition bids. Torres Construction submitted the best bid in the amount of $23,500 for the asbestos removal, demolition, and cleanup, and staff recommends awarding them to bid.
Council have any questions for Jake?
Do you have a history with them?
Yes.
Yeah, they've done several demolition transfers.
Thank you.
Because the question I usually ask is if we've heard anything from the owner and what they say.
Of this particular property, this is the one that was presented before council.
Any other questions for Jake? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Resolution number 158-2025, awarding the contract for asbestos abatement and demolition of the condemned property at 614 East Ford Street to Weston McKee of Fairville, Iowa, in the amount of $16,400. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number 158-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
There was a recommendation.
Second. Okay, Jake.
Bids for this, says for 614 East Ford, were accepted until 2:00 PM on August 21st, 2025. This one, we received four asbestos and demolition bids. Weston McKee submitted the best bid in the amount of $16,400 for the asbestos removal, demolition, and cleanup. The staff recommends awarding that as a contract.
And we have history with them as well?
With Weston, yes. He's done several last few years. This was a fire property. It was caught on fire.
Does council have any questions for Jake regarding this property? Okay, if not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Resolution number 159-2025, authorizing the removal of special assessments applied to 122 South Iowa Avenue, originally assessed in resolution number 199-2024. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number 159-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, Jake, thanks, ma'am.
In July, the city obtained a default judgment awarding the city title to the abandoned property at 122 South Iowa. This resolution removes special assessments assessed to the property under previous ownership or voting fees. So in other words, the city now owns this property. Do I remove the voting fees so that we can sell it to someone that's going to rehab this property?
Council have any questions for Jake regarding this property?
What's the dollar amount that we're going to give up?
$905.
Okay, $905.
I refer to it as around $900, but.
All right.
Yeah, it's 900 plus a $5 added fee.
Basically, it's our property now, so be all it.
Yeah.
Any other questions for Jake regarding this property?
Are they going to do something with it?
Yeah, so we, we've taken title to it. So now we start the process of selling it and putting it in the hands of somebody that can rehab it. I was hoping to get that packet out today. It just didn't work. So hopefully tomorrow or the next day it will jump the website. We'll have a two week, two, three week sell period and then we'll accept bids for it and get it.
Any indication of anyone who's interested?
Yeah, I've met several people.
Right.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Right, thank you. Thank you, Jake.
Resolution number 161-2025, allowing for electronic imaging, retention, and electronic signatures to be sent and accepted by the city of Etomo. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number 161-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
I believe our city clerk, Chris Reindhardt, is going to handle this one.
Yeah. Records are created and maintained to facilitate memory. City officials cannot reasonably be expected to remember every fact relative to a government's business. Records once created or received must be maintained in an altered condition in order to afford reliability, reliable authority for subsequent business of the government. Municipal governments conduct a large amount of business that must be recorded. Accumulation of records of already transacted business, inactive records, can overwhelm available storage space, which I can highly attest to, my mom has a lot of files.
They do.
Available storage space and hamper retrieval of both active and inactive records. Furthermore, records of business already transacted can prove both legally and financially burdensome since records must be produced when requested. Retrieving records can be difficult if record management is not done properly. Some records of business already transacted remain permanently valuable to the government due to their content. But most records are of no further use once the documented matter has been transacted and routine audit, legal, and administrative uses have been completed. The Code of Iowa states that public records include all records, documents, tapes, or other information stored, preserved, in any medium. Since the code is open about any medium being used for records, the city of Etomo plans to digitize and store all records accordingly. Certain authenticated records will be kept physically in the city clerk's records. This will also aid in unnecessary duplication and will maintain dependable, complete, and accessible record management. So the physical records will be like our resolutions, our ordinances, those items that have to be retained permanently. But we'll also have them electronically as well. Additionally, other departments in the city of Etomo may adopt or have already adopted their own departmental information systems that house all records and documents pertaining to said department. So for example, we have UKG that was adopted as the city's human resources information system. Iwork was utilized as the city's building and code nuisance permitting system. Civic Systems LLC was the adopted software platform to house city financial documents. And Laserfish was adopted by the city clerk's, city clerk's office to house all of their data and not already identified within the other reference departments. All files are kept in an electronic format that is dependable, complete, and searchable for record management purposes. So this is just taking us a step closer to becoming paperless. Not that we'll be complete paperless by any means, but this will help us in regards to our retaining of documents and allow us to be able to search a lot easier for them. So I would entertain any questions from council.
Once you digitize the work, what then happens to the original copies? Do we store them also?
It depends. If it's one of the items that has to be stored permanently, like a resolution or an ordinance, then we would keep the paper documents. But other documents that come through, we would discard them based on their retention schedule, which is what I have with the cities. They have a document retention schedule that we adopt here.
Okay, thank you.
So Ms. Reindhardt, what, what's the downside? What's the weak point here? Can these, are these records really going to be kept well?
Don't ask that.
Don't ask that.
No, I'm just kidding. No, we have, all documents are stored. Our IT personnel is fabulous. He stores all of our information. We have backups.
Every day.
Every day, so.
So everything is not only made, but then backed?
Correct. So there was an incident, this was before I was here, so don't blame me. But the backup didn't take one evening and there was quite a few years of documents that were lost. So my office has been tasked with getting all of those scanned back into the system, which has been a task in itself. So we are hopeful that there would be no other incidents since we do have the backup and we have an IT department that maintains that as well.
You know, to, to counsel the former. Reed's part two, what I used to do, former job, we would, we would keep the records we had to per retention. But we would also electronically scan them and it was much cheaper, much more efficient. And you could lay your hands on a document quicker if you absolutely needed to, instead of looking through boxes. Yeah, but, you know, so I, just to ease your worries there.
I was not really worried about it, but I just, you know, I just wondered how secure.
Search capabilities be much more efficient in that regard. The other thing too is with paper copies, there's a chance for natural disaster loss, fire, water damage, things like that, that could permanently delete records as well. So this will provide some backup to that.
So Chris, once you, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Hoffman.
Any, sorry, anything you write on the document, if you write on a document either, that needs to be retained, digitizing also keeps the notes that you wrote on that, because those notes would need to be retained too if you wrote on that document. So it does keep every aspect of the document.
But those written notes would not be searchable?
Right, but they.
But they would still be there, yes.
For legal purposes.
Correct.
Chris, once you've digitized, is there a way of doing a backup to be sure that it did transfer or not?
When I log into Laserfish every day, I'm able to see that everything is there. I think that would be sufficient. I mean, unless, I don't know if there's any other suggestions for that, but we've not had any issues so far.
Well, I think when backups don't take to Edward, I'm sorry. I said when backups don't take there, I imagine that Edward gets a notification. I mean, I know when my computer for work doesn't back up, there's a notification that says it did back up too, so.
Well, I got a lot of faith in him too, that he, that he knows exactly what he's doing.
And also with our Laserfish and as well as our other platforms, they have people on staff that we go to if we have any issues or problems and they can usually find a way to retain those documents if for some reason they are discarded.
And when he's doing backup every day, he's backing up all those systems. Even the ones that you mentioned.
Correct.
What other part would choose? Any other questions for Chris?
More and more places are going to this because you have to save a ton of money without having to store stuff in file cabinets and boxes and storage. I mean, it's just become a thing that everybody's going to.
So there's no other questions, then Chris can take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cabbins?
Yes.
Thank you, council. Resolution number 163-2025, awarding the contract and approving the contract insurance and bond for the Allison Avenue Reconstruction Project. Recommendation passed in the adopted resolution number 163-2025.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Motion approved.
Second.
Okay, we have our public courts director, Philip R. Meyer, and he's going to handle the next four resolutions.
All right, thank you, mayor. Some plans for this project were posted on the city's website. They were submitted to master voters of Iowa for publication of their construction update claim service. They're also available for pickup at the engineering office. Bid announcement was published in the Etomo Courier notifying the public of the project. Bids were received and opened by the city of Etomo on August 20th. Two bids were received. The lowest responsible bidder was TK Conqueror Pala, Iowa. with a base bid of one hundred seventy-three thousand four hundred fifteen dollars and an alternate of eighty-one thousand nine hundred for a P C C insert, for concrete insert, for a total contract amount of two hundred fifty-five thousand three hundred fifteen dollars versus an estimate of three hundred twenty-five thousand on the required bond certificate of assurance and contracts. A bidding included for the reference project and are now filed at the city clerk. We recommend awarding the project to TK Concrete. This is for Allison Avenue.
Is there any questions from council for Philip regarding this project?
It's basically a one-block piece, right?
Correct.
One block there, two hundred fifty-five thousand, I'm glad it's coming in seventy thousand under, under the estimate. That's great. But that's amazing how expensive stuff like that is.
Yes.
Phil, who actually, this may be a, you're in your shame. Who actually makes those estimates for the city before they send them back?
We do, myself and engineer supervisor usually. On this particular one, they gave us a really, really good price on, because we, we bid it as curb and gutter down each side, and then we bid it as a concrete or asphalt insert, and they gave us a price on it on curb and gutter. That was like a third of what we'd seen on other projects. So that was the, that was the biggest reduction in cost and also the pavement removal hidden way low, which is probably because they don't have to break the concrete.
Very bad shape.
So, aside the rest of the street is asphalt?
No, it's concrete.
It's all concrete.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Great.
But you have to estimate high, I mean, you, your estimates.
You don't estimate high.
Trying to budget and plan.
We try to everything to account. I think part is very less. Prices have been going up so much every year, we still think they are, but I think last year they kind of stopped at the end of the year, and this year they also stayed pretty steady, if not a little bit less. So I think part of it is us still thinking there's inflation every year and it's kind of stopped in the last year or two, as far as construction costs go.
Any other questions from council for Philip regarding this project? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-four, twenty twenty-five, awarding the contract and approving the contract insurance and bond for the cul-de-sac reconstruction project. Recommendation passing adopt resolution number one sixty-four, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
Thank you, mayor. So plans for the cul-de-sac reconstruction project were posted on the city's website, submitted to master voters of Iowa, and also available for pickup at the engineering office. Announcement was also published in the Atumal Courier, notifying the public of this project. Bids were received and opened by the city of Atumal on August twentieth at two P M. Three bids were received. The lowest bidder is also TK Concrete Appala, Iowa, in the amount of three hundred, five hundred and thirty-five thousand and ninety-five dollars versus an estimate of seven hundred seventy-five thousand. The required bond certificates of insurance and signed contracts for the reference project are now filed at the city clerk. The bid tab and blank list is attached. Again, this was a one where we don't ever do cul-de-sacs really, so we thought contractors would up their price at all, it's be hand poured, no paving machine, and the prices we got for hand poured concrete were way lower than we thought. So that's where the best majority of the price difference on this was. I think we had like eighty-five dollars square yard, and I think they bid it for under sixty.
Now, could I ask a question?
Yes.
Is there ever a possibility that you might deliver any bid as low, so that you might get a bid and doesn't make it? So, you know, I think the bidders once in a while will figure out, our bids are always high, so they can come in wherever they want to, and I just, I don't think that's a good idea.
No, we try to bid it what we think is going to be. We don't try to, we don't try to estimate it deliberately high for any reason. If they do bid it this low, it's because they see something we don't. Like this is a unique project that we really have to dump before. And we took hand pour prices from other projects where the hand pour quantities were a little bit lower. But obviously, I think the cul-de-sac's got a big open circle, so there's efficiencies in there that we, we didn't take into account as far as paving, different sections all in a row.
What's a yard of concrete cost nowadays? Not laying just a yard of concrete.
Hundred, or twenty dollars, depending on if you get a short load, even more. Just depends on the.
Size of the project.
Yeah, size of the project.
So this bid came in at sixty dollars a yard?
A square yard.
A square yard.
Okay, yeah.
All right, thank you.
So that's for square yard, that's a cubic yard of concrete.
Yeah.
Hundred fifty bucks, depending on how big a load you get.
Any other questions from council?
No.
If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-five, twenty twenty-five, awarding the contract and approving the contract insurance and bond for the Lake Road pavement rehab project. Recommendation passing adopt resolution number one sixty-five, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Move the recommendation.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
All right, thank you, mayor. This is for the Lake Road pavement rehab project. Plans for the project were posted on the city's website, submitted to master voters of Iowa, and also posted on the engineering office webpage. An announcement was published in the Atumal Courier, notifying the public of the project. Bids were received and opened on August twentieth at two P M. One bid was received. The lowest responsible bidder was Norris Asphalt Company of Atumal, Iowa, in the amount of one million here, six thousand seven hundred forty-five dollars and ninety cents. The required bond certificate of insurance, signed contracts for the project are unfiled with the city clerk. The city recommends awarding the contract to, to Norris.
And what was your estimate for this project?
Two point two five million.
We're getting better and better.
Well, yeah, we, we were really close on this one, on all our stuff, on pavement removals, where we, we busted on that one. I don't know. We, they were way lower than what we've seen in those projects on pavement removal. Again, it might be because of the deteriorated condition of the concrete, or the, sorry, this is all asphalt, it's a deteriorated condition of asphalt that we overestimated that number.
And that's about a two-mile stretch?
It's like eight thousand feet, so.
A thousand feet?
Eight, eight thousand.
Thousand feet?
Yeah, we're at eight thousand feet, so a little mile and a half.
Any other questions from council for Philip?
What's the chances of getting that done this fall?
I, we've made delivery, contact with Norris, and they indicate they can, they're going to get it done this fall.
Say that again?
They, they intend to get it done this fall.
Okay, great, thank you.
Because can't you do asphalt and concrete like pretty much through the month of November usually?
Asphalt is about ground and air temperature. It's a little bit more sensitive to cold weather because you need asphalt to stay hot long enough to compact it. So they, depending on temperature, they can work into August, November, probably, or sorry, October, November.
This is all concrete, right?
So asphalt.
It's asphalt?
Yeah, Lake Road is, is full-depth asphalt.
Okay.
Any other questions from council?
Are they going to lay the whole thing at one time, or are they going to do it half and half?
They'll probably, I haven't spoken with them yet. I don't think they have a paper that can paint the same full width, so they'll probably do one lane at a time, for most.
Okay.
But we haven't spoken directly with them about, about that yet.
Have you talked to them, would you let me know? Thank you.
But the hope would be that they're going to be able to do the whole project yet this fall, correct?
Yes.
There's none of any other questions from council? Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
Resolution number one sixty-six, twenty twenty-five, award the twenty twenty-five R F P number one, Highway one forty-nine cross-country sewer repair, and authorize the mayor to sign the contract. Recommendation passing adopt resolution number one sixty-six, twenty twenty-five.
Is there a motion to approve the recommendation?
Have to approve.
Second.
Okay, Phil.
All right, thank you, mayor. So this is a shallow cross-country sanitary sewer that has a history of blockages. The section of pipe is comprised of multiple different material types. They intend to replace the entire section from mainhole to mainhole with a, one type, one type of pipe. The existing pipe is eight inches diameter and approximately a hundred and thirty feet length. The pipe is cross-country, but it's only closed to Highway one forty-nine slash Business one sixty-three. So there'll be pretty good access to it, and there's two ditch crossings, one of them which will require encasing the sewer pipe in concrete. We sent the R F P out to nine contractors, two return bids. The lowest bid was received from D C Concrete Construction of Dowd, Iowa, in the amount of forty-six thousand four hundred and ten dollars. Staff recommends also award the contract to concrete construction.
Does council have any questions for Philip regarding this project?
Pretty sure we have history with them, right?
Yeah, yeah, for sure.
Any estimates of when that'll start and be done?
My guess is they'll do it early in the year. That way they can get, that contractor also does paving work, so they'll want to pave as long as they can. If they can't really concrete anymore, they'll probably come do this project.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from council? If not, Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
The next item on the agenda is our public forum. Is there anyone that would like to speak on any non-agenda items this evening? Okay. The next item is mayor, city council report, and telecommunications. Does council have anything that they would love to announce or state?
I just have something really quick. So this past week, there was an opening of the Legacy Soccer Field, and it was just really cool to see the community show up. It was a huge crowd. The Legacy Foundation gets a lot of pushback from our community, and I wish everyone in Atumal could have been there to see the joy on the faces of everyone there and to see the true impact that the Legacy Foundation, in partnership with J V S, Community First, the city, just, it was such an amazing event. It was so uplifting, and I wish that we could have that present in everything great that the city's doing, because we really are doing a lot of things, and I just wish people could see that. And you could definitely see the joy of the community at that event.
I've got one thing I want to say, but I'll see if any of the other council have any things you want to say.
I'd like to ask Kara a question. You also sent out a notice that the party is going to be taking place, are you going to comment on that?
Oh, High Five Friday? Yeah, so that's for city staff, city council, High Five Friday in October. I don't remember October 12th, because I want to remember what I said.
Friday?
Oh, it's a Friday.
October third at seven thirty.
Friday, October 3rd at seven thirty. The city has been invited to go do High Five Friday, and it is one of my favorite things. The kids, again, it's back with that joy of, of just seeing the kids excited. So love to see city staff, love to see city council there. It's a good time.
Now, Farnie is a great contributor. I have three daughters that received Farnie, why don't I say, to go to college and received all four years, except one, she didn't go to college four years, so she got one year. But it was very valuable, and Farnie designation is, is quite nice.
Anything else from council? Okay, I just want to take this opportunity to thank our community development department. I really have appreciated the four years that I've been mayor that they've really made a commitment to try and work on getting rid of our derelict housing in Atumal, which we still have a tremendous amount of. And they've done more in the last four years than I think they've done the prior four years. I know those are sensitive issues, and you know, I know we had a lot of poor people in Atumal, but just because you're poor don't mean you shouldn't be expected to maintain your property. I hear that all the time, well, I'm poor. Well, I did that, but there's ways that other people can maybe help you keep your property up, because if we don't keep our properties up, our community is not going to look attracted to new business and industry that might want to come here. And unfortunately, a lot of our neighborhoods, the neighborhoods that I remember as a kid growing up here in the sixties, they don't look so hot anymore. I remember what those neighborhoods used to look like fifty years ago, and a lot of them need a lot of help. So I applaud our community development staff and our housing staff, because it's not an easy job to do, but they've really tried hard to work with people. If people don't want to work with you, then you only have the recourse of going to condemnation. And I personally am very proud and pleased with what they've done, because I know it's not a popular job, but I think it's in the best interest of our city to make our neighborhoods look good. So thank you very much. Anybody have anything else? If not, I entertain a motion to adjourn our city council.
I don't know if we're going to further lift the item that's on table, off of table tonight.
If you make a motion in a second, and you can.
Okay, I would move that we lift the item off the table, and I think who cares, the one that has to do that, because she's a.
I do not.
No.
Anybody?
New rules.
No, that's just the way it is.
All right, I make a motion, then we lift it.
Is there a second? I guess it fails because of not having a second. So it'll stay on table at least for the near future. Okay, if there's nothing else that we need to deal with tonight, I entertain a motion to adjourn our city council meeting.
So move.
Second.
Chris will take the role.
Councilmember Reed?
Yes.
Councilmember Galloway?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoffman?
Yes.
Councilmember Cavanagh?
Yes.
We are adjourned, and thank you, everybody, for attending our Atumal city council meeting tonight. Safe travels on here.